Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order and we'll go ahead and start with our invocation and our pledge of allegiance by our city manager.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our heads please. Heavenly Father, please guide our hearts as we make decisions tonight. May your goodness and love be present among us tonight. Bless our gathering with unity, hope, and vision. Let our work always find faith in you, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Chip Dominguez, we have a proclamation on crime victims' rights week?
Yes, Mayor, City Council. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas when crime occurs, the effects can be life-changing. In addition to the immediate harm that has come to them, victims of crime often experience lingering difficulties, including feeling of vulnerability, fear, and anger. Whereas across Texas, compassionate advocates are there to help victims in need of assistance navigating the criminal justice system and the recovery process. By educating victims of their rights, assisting them in exercising those rights, and in helping them rebuild their lives, these advocates improve the lives of crime victims and help make Texas a safer place. Whereas each April, a week-long campaign is conducted to promote awareness of victims' rights and to honor courageous crime victims and survivors. Whereas at this time, we encourage all citizens of Mission to learn more about crime victims' rights and to support victims and the advocates who provide them with such valuable assistance. We can help our fellow citizens on the road to recovery with compassion and respect. Now therefore, we the City Council, the City of Mission, do hereby designate the week of April 10th through the 16th, 2016, to be Crime Victims Rights Week, to honor crime victims and survivors and those who've served them, proclaim on this the 11th day of April 2016.
Okay, we don't need a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move that we pass the proclamation for Crime Victims Rights Week.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Mayor, along with this proclamation, I'd like to invite you all and obviously the general public here today to our Crime Victims Rights Ceremony that will be held on Thursday at 5:00 here at the Police Department across the street. It's an event that we held every year basically to promote the crime victims' rights here in our community. And everybody's invited again this coming Thursday at 5:00 here at the Police Department front courtyard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have some representatives from your staff?
Yes, here today with me is Sergeant Ted Rodriguez, who heads our Criminal Investigation Division. Ms. Diana Macias, our Crime Victims Rights Advocate. And Ms. Teresa Plata has always been part of this instrumental in helping crime victims here in our community. We thank you again, Mayor and City Council, for being part of this every year and helping us to be an important part for the victims in our community.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Yes, Mayor and City Council. Second proclamation was the men and women who serve as public safety telecommunicators such as 911 operators and dispatchers are dedicated to saving lives. They respond to Texans in times of great need and their specialized skill and calm-caring presence are invaluable to the Long Star State. Whereas the Commission of State Emergency Communications works with local and state governments to ensure reliable access to emergency telecommunications services. To highlight the invaluable role of public safety telecommunicators, the Commission designates a week in April for an awareness campaign. Whereas at this time, we encourage all citizens of Mission to extend their appreciation to public safety telecommunicators. Their diligent efforts ensure that help is on the way when our citizens need it most. Now therefore, we the City Council, the City of Mission, do hereby designate the week of April 10th through the 16th, 2016, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, proclaim on this the 11th day of April of 2016.
Okay, we need a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move.
Second.
Motion and second to approve our proclamation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Mayor, with us today is Sarah Salinas, our head dispatcher for the Mission Police Department, and Robert Harero, one of our dispatchers as well.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Ms. Carrillo, we have a proclamation, Animal Cruelty Prevention Month.
to step up over here with me. Of course, we have the City of Mission Health Department Adopt a Pet Program, who is outside with pets to adopt. We have Mr. Tim Owlsley, the director from Palm Valley Animal Shelter, the Lori P. Andrews Paw Center. We have Ms. Brenda Torres with RGV Low Cost Bay Neuter Clinic. We have Ms. Imelda Avendaño from Forgotten Friends Texas Rescue RGV. We have Ms. Zira Mata from United for Paws. And we have Ms. Claudia Bedon from Mercy for the Voiceless. And we have Ms. Loretta Fuentes from Yaki Animal Rescue. And I don't know if there's anyone here right now representing Father Roy Snipes, but if their representative is here.
Father Roy is not here?
The proclamation, Mayor and Council, reads as follows: Whereas there are more than 73 million cats and 68 million dogs living in more than 63 million households across the United States. Whereas acts of animal abuse, animal fighting, and animal neglect by way of denying basic necessities of care such as fresh water, food, or shelter are considered to be animal cruelty. Whereas many people who witness or hear about animal cruelty are not aware that legal action can be taken to help stop the problem and prosecute criminal offenders. Whereas enforcement of animal cruelty laws can be carried out by municipal animal control agencies, local policy, or by humane organizations that are granted power from the state or local government. Whereas animal welfare organizations across the country work daily to educate people about the proper care of animals and how to prevent animal cruelty. Whereas the City of Mission, along with the Palm Valley Animal Shelter, the Lori P. Andrews Paw Center, support activities that bring people and their pets together in a harmonious and safe relationship to educate the public as to the needs of their pets and to provide information on the proper care and treatment of animals. Whereas the City of Mission Adopt a Pet Program, Palm Valley Animal Shelter, the Lori P. Andrews Paw Center, advocates for unwanted, abandoned, or stray animals, and work towards the adoption of these pets to new loving families, and encourages the spay and neutering of animals to reduce the overpopulation problem. Whereas the City of Mission commends the efforts of other rescue organizations such as RGV Low Cost Bay Neuter Clinic, Cinderella Pet Rescue, Inc., Forgotten Friends Texas Rescue RGV, Recycled Rover and Friends, United for Paws, Mercy for the Voiceless, Yaki Animal Rescue, and Father Roy Snipes of Our Lady of Wadaleupa Church for taking a stand against all forms of criminal abuse and neglect. Now therefore, we the City Council, the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim April 2016 as Animal Cruelty Prevention Month in Mission, Texas, and call upon all residents to report the abuse and cruelty of all animals to the City of Mission Animal Control Department, proclaimed on this 11th day of April 2016.
Do need a motion to approve these?
Second.
Motion and second to approve our proclamation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Mayor Council, we also have Ms. Rosie Olivares, who is an advocate and for all of these pets who will be joining us also.
Good to see you, Mayor.
Good to see you. Who's this?
Mrs. Benny, and she's a rescue dog from Palm Valley, and I'm on the Board of Directors for the Spay and Neuter Clinic, and Brenda's one of our employees.
Hi.
Hi, Ruben. Rosalie Weisfeld, yes, nice to see you.
Hi. How're you doing?
I'm with Father Roy.
Really? How're you doing? Good to see you. How's it going? Yeah, hey, bro. How's it going over there? Let's do my line? Yes.
Mayor Council, we also have Ms. Nancy Villalde here from Mission CISD, also present with us today.
She came from Palm Valley, you know, we adopted her.
Okay, all right. Everybody look over here at me. Perfect, oh my God. All right. Three, two, one, smile. Okay, give it one second. Let's do one more. And then three, two, one, big smile. All right. You got it?
Thank you. Mayor Council, City of Mission Adopt a Pet Program does have some kitty cats and some dogs there for adoption. When I was walking in, there was one pet that was already adopted that is out here. And also, I am the proud owner of a rescue dog that I adopted through the City of Mission, and I love my Coco. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you, Anna.
That's awesome.
Ms. Rocha, on the Proclamation National Library Week?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I have today with us several members from our library board. I have Ms. Sheila Vias Pancrits. I have Ms. Liz Garza, Mr. Mike Manuel, Ms. Ann Whitfield, Ms. Linda Fraser, and Ms. Jane Garza. If you all want to come up?
The dog care?
And the proclamation reads as follows: Whereas libraries are not just about what we have for people, but what we do for and with people. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions, and library workers and librarians fuel the efforts to better their communities, campuses, and schools. Whereas libraries are evolving in order to serve their communities and to continue to fulfill the role in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies. Whereas libraries and librarians open up a world of possibilities through innovative STEAM programming, job-seeking resources, and the power of reading. Whereas libraries and librarians are looking beyond their traditional roles of providing more opportunities for community engagement and delivering new services that connect closely with patrons' needs. Whereas libraries support democracy and effect social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim the week of April 10th through the 16th, 2016, to be National Library Week, and encourage all residents to visit the library this week and explore what's new at your library. Because of you, libraries transform, proclaimed on this 11th day of April 2016.
Mayor, I move that we accept the proclamation as read.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second?
Mayor, also, I would like to also recognize that we do have a retired librarian in the audience, Ms. Perry Anne Hutley. Will you please stand up? I know you're here and... We can continue, Mayor, thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Hi. Hi, Ms. Hutley.
This is Hutley. Oh, I have to do whatever they tell us to do.
Mike, you get in there?
I get in the middle.
Sheila, on the other side. Okay, Mike, are we good? Stand there. Thank you.
And then three, two, one, smile. Let me do one more. And three, two, one, smile. All right, we got it.
Thank you very much. Everything you're doing is fine. Is this one in a hoesa? You're trying me to adopt?
Mayor, I think I left somebody out. If I remember correctly, Kathy Olivares, the archer, ex-librarian also?
Yay.
And I guess anybody else that I missed?
I'm so sorry.
I would be ventured to say that, to get recognized if there's anybody else in the audience that I do not know that...
Okay.
Congratulations, Kathy.
We now turn ourselves into the Mission Chamber of Commerce as a presentation.
Yes, Mayor, we do have Ms. Kathy Garcia, who's a board member with the Chamber of Commerce, here to welcome and introduce our new CEO.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's an honor to be here with you guys this afternoon. Our board president is out of town, and so he couldn't make it this afternoon. But as you all know, we've gone through a bit of a transition at the chamber recently, and our selection committee has gone through a couple of weeks of interviewing. And today, we're very proud to introduce to you our selection for our new CEO and president of the Mission Chamber of Commerce. And I'd like to invite Mr. Josh Stockle to come up. We're very excited about the next stage of the Mission Chamber of Commerce, and we know that Josh is going to do a really good job. We're putting him to work today on his very first day of work, and he'll introduce himself, and then he'll present the chamber work to you all this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Josh Stockle. I'm glad and honored to be in this position. Look forward to having a lot more opportunity to talk and meet with you all. I'm quickly going to go through, we're doing this upcoming month. If you'd like, I'd like to pass these out to you so you can see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice meeting you.
Thank you, sir.
Today at 5:30, we'll be welcoming Arte Suave, Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, to the chamber with a ribbon cutting taking place at 2407 Brock Street in Mission. Next, we have our Runway Rentals Ribbon Cutting. We'll be hosting ribbon cutting for the new Runway Rentals located at 2575 East Griffin Parkway, Suite 11. This will take place on Wednesday, April 20th, 2016, at 5:30 PM. We'd love to have you guys come join us. Please join us as we host our monthly business networking event, Business After Hours. This month's sponsor is Plains Capital Bank, and it will take place Thursday, April 21st, at 5:30 PM at 1709 North Conway Avenue. This is a wonderful opportunity for our members to meet and mingle with other local business owners and their teams. All for the Kids Golf Tournament, we are gearing up for our second annual All for the Kids Golf Tournament taking place on Friday, April 29th, at the Simron Country Club. Funds generated from the tournament will benefit Mission CISD's Back to School Bash taking place in August. This partnership between Mission CISD and the Chamber has enabled us to provide over 2,000 backpacks to the children of the Mission community. Teams and individual players are welcome and may register by calling the Chamber of Commerce or visiting the website at www.alfortokids.com. That's all we have for today. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome.
We have our department reports. They're in your packet. Any questions or items that you might want to discuss? Don't hesitate to ask.
Mayor, I move for approval.
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to approve the reports as they are in your packet. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Citizens of participation, we have anybody in the audience that would like to make any comments? Anybody in the audience that might want to have any comments concerning anything except our agenda? If not, we're going to go into our public hearings, and we have our first item, Item 1.1A.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for rezoning of a 0.25 acre tract of land being part of or a portion of the golf course and lake reserve out of Meadow Creek Country Club, Phase 1-A. The zoning is AOI, and the request is to rezone from AOI to R2 duplex, fourplex. The applicant is Ismena Garcia, and if the council's inclined to approve it, this would require the adoption of an ordinance. On March 23rd, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The property is located, as you could see on your monitors, there at the northeast corner of Riverbend and Oasis Drive. There was public opposition during the planning commission meeting. The concerns expressed, some of them were high-speed traffic, the safety of children, parking overflow problems, and the evaluation of homes, and many other comments expressed. And there's some unofficial minutes in your packet. A petition with 52% opposition was submitted to the planning department. We send out 43 notices, so that's probably about 22 people out of the 43 that received notice are in opposition. The board, the planning commission recommended approval of the R2 zone. We do note that this tract of land was previously presented to the City Council on March 26th, 2007, to rezone it from the same, actually from agricultural and permanent back in 2007 to residential townhouse district. And it was denied 5-0 back in March 26th, 2007. Based on the opposition and the fact that it's been before the council in the past, staff is recommending denial of this rezoning request. This is a public hearing, this matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request?
Yes.
Okay, we have, who wants to speak first? Go ahead and state your name and address, and why you are against it.
And Mr. Mayor, just a reminder for all the potential speakers here, there is a three-minute rule.
You have three minutes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Ofchera, Mr. Plata, Mr. Okonya, for letting me speak. And I speak for a group, the group of homeowners in the Meadow Creek Country Club subdivision. Most of what I was going to say has already been very eloquently said for me. The area that this property is in falls within Phase 1A. And Phase 1A is, we have covenants to cover Phase 1A. All homes, everything that is built there is an R1, it must be single-family. And this area does fall within the purview of what our area would be for Phase 1A. And then again, the March 26th of 2007, there were 12 parcels, including this area, that were brought to the council, and the council denied it. One thing that we wanted to bring up is I know that you have a 200-foot rule, that when property is put up and a zoning change is brought in, the problem that we run into is that in our association, at least half of those people are winter Texans. So when it was mentioned that 22 of the 40 letters went out, well, probably 22 of those winter Texans had already left. So if it's brought, you know, anything is brought to this council that isn't between the time the winter Texans are here, we have no way of knowing as an association. Is it possible to send a letter to the association or a representative so that we can let the people who live here full-time know?
Do you have apartments right next to this property? I mean, apartments all around it?
Okay, what is next to it? Okay, those are condos. They're privately owned condos. These right here, come back down. Those right there are privately owned condos.
No, but they stay on that side.
On this side?
Right there.
Okay, anything on Oasis?
I saw all of them were apartments, and apartments on the other side. So the only area that is not built is this area. And they want to build some apartments or a house. A house is too costly for them, so they want to build a fourplex.
I understand.
What's wrong with that?
It falls within the purview of our single-family homes. Oasis, the area that you're talking about, is not in our association.
But this piece of property is...
Is in the association.
Is too large. Everything else besides, on this side of their apartments, or the piece of property are apartments?
No, they're privately owned condos.
I know, but it's the same thing. I mean, but they're townhouses or apartments.
No. It's a fourplex, but they're privately owned. Individual people own each one of them.
But this would be privately owned.
No, you're, okay, you're misunderstanding what I'm saying. The, right there, that he's pointing to, those are condos. There are four condos in each of those spaces. Each one of those condos has its own owner.
And this one would have two owners, be two apartments.
No, that's not the way it was brought. They want to put a fourplex in there?
No, a twoplex.
I saw all of them were apartments, and apartments on the other side. So the only area that is not built is this area. And they want to build some apartments, or a house. A house is too costly for them, so they want to build a fourplex.
I understand.
What's wrong with that?
But it falls within the purview of our single-family homes. Oasis, the area that you're talking about, is not in our association.
But this piece of property is-
Is in the association.
Is two lots. Everything else besides, on each side of their apartments, or the piece of property are apartments or-
No, they're privately owned condos.
I know, but it's the same thing. I mean, but they're townhouses or apartments.
No. They're, it's a fourplex, but they're privately owned. Individual people own each one of them.
But this would be privately owned.
No, you're, okay, you're misunderstanding what I'm saying. The, right there, that he's pointing to, those are condos. There are four condos in each of those spaces. Each one of those condos has its own owner.
And this ones would have two owners, be two apartments.
No, that's not the way it was brought. They want to put a fourplex in there?
No, a twoplex.
According to the paperwork I got, it was a fourplex. She drew pictures and brought it to-
Two lots, two, I mean, it's two apartments.
It was, that's not the way it was explained to us. We still don't want those there. If you notice, in that red square, there's a tree. And on the back of that tree, that is the green for the number 12 tee box.
Yeah, but he owns that?
No, the golf course owns that. So if you've got somebody, we were talking about safety issues and things. If you have somebody that overshoots that green-
Yeah, but I mean, let's forget about the golf course. I mean, if somebody wants to build a house there, they cannot build a house?
They can build a house, an R1 house.
In each lot?
In that slot, but not at R2.
So they'll have two houses.
I'm just going to interrupt, I'm sorry. Thank you, guys, for giving us the opportunity. I think that area is, when we purchased our house, and there's those designated green areas all around the golf course. So when we purchased it, and like in that area, it's a designated green area. They're not subdivided for lots. It's owned actually by the golf course, and the intent originally was-
But this family owns those two lots there.
It's not the green area? So they sold the green areas? Or is that, oh, okay, well, okay, then-
This family wants to build two apartments. A twoplex.
Except for they want to retain ownership of them, or are they going to rent them?
Yeah.
So they're going to rent them?
I don't know if they're going to rent them or not, but what I'm saying is-
That's the difference between the other ones. The other ones have-
They can build two houses, one in each slot, right?
Yeah, I did not know that that was not a designated green area. If it is, it's something that happened without us knowing.
What I'm saying is, they can build two houses, one in each slot, right?
But they have to be single-family houses.
Yes, of course. Single-family housing, you have one house, but they want to build a twoplex, I don't see the difference.
The difference is, is you have two families living in a duplex.
No, no.
An R1 is one, now, if they want to build one house and then build another house, you know, and you've got two houses with only one family in each, that's a different situation. They didn't ask for that. They asked to build duplexes to put two families in the same slot. That's not a-
But if they're going to build two houses because they have two lots?
But they want to make those two-
You're saying that they want to build-
Duplexes.
Two lots, can they build an apartment in one lot?
No.
Just for one family?
Will be a condominium.
Single, single-family home only, one house, one family.
And they can build another one on the other one.
Right, and then you've got two separate homes. But they were requesting duplexes. They wanted two families living in the same lot, and two families living in this lot.
You don't have, your association don't have a living area on each home. I mean, what's the sizes of your townhouses that you permit there? Are they 1,000, 100?
I'm sorry, the size of what?
Of the house or the apartment.
Mr. Mayor, if I may interrupt just a moment. It's a single lot, it's not multiple lots, and the others are in their own separate areas, part of our HOA.
All right. This, the size of this is 2.5 acres. It's only one lot, it's not two lots.
Well, two lots. That's fine, so you're opposing, it's okay, so, but they can have, your objection is that they cannot build a twoplex?
They cannot build a duplex. They can only build a one, they can build a home, okay?
On each lot?
On that slot. And this space is one space, not two, so it's one home for a single family. That's what our covenants say.
But I hear that she has two lots in that space.
I don't see two lots.
¿Cuántos lots tienen?
One lot.
One lot? Okay, ahora vas tú. Okay, well, thank you very much, ma'am. I think we need to know what you all want, but there, let me ask you one more question.
Yes, sir.
On the side, of the, besides, behind, on the side, they have apartments all along.
Okay, again, we don't have anything to do with Oasis. This falls within-
Right where the area is-
But that's on Oasis.
All that are apartments.
But that's on Oasis. That doesn't fall within our covenants.
So they're not under-
Anything on Oasis is not in our covenants. Our covenants cover anything south of Circle Drive, which is right up there where the clubhouse is, all the way down Riverbend.
All the way down to the lot, to this lot?
Right, it goes, well, it goes even farther than that.
So she can go ahead and subdivide this lot and create two lots?
No. Covenants say that she cannot subdivide the lot.
Why not?
Because we have covenants that have, she has to live within the covenants. She has two lots right across the street. She knows what the covenants are. She's not new to our area. She bought those two lots across the street where that tree is.
Planning and zoning approved this, this, this lot, it was a, I mean, majority, everybody voted in favor of letting her build her duplex.
No.
Didn't they do it? What did the planning and zoning do?
Danny. It was approved unanimously.
It was approved unanimously. Everybody in the planning and zoning voted for her to do this.
But that doesn't make what they approved correct.
Well, but they-
This piece of property falls within our association and our covenants.
But we have them there for a purpose.
Have what?
The people in the planning and zoning.
Sir, then what's the purpose of us having covenants? If you're going to be able to tell somebody they can build what they want wherever they want, that's why we have covenants. That's why we have homeowners association.
And did the planning and zoning see that?
Planning and zoning, it was a difficult evening.
For you?
It was a difficult evening for everyone.
But they had it all in favor of letting her build this duplex?
Like I said, they didn't listen to us.
They didn't listen to you?
They did not, it was, I'm trying to be diplomatic.
You don't have to.
I don't have to?
No.
Oh, good. Mr. Sheets was a pain. He would talk to other people, he would not listen to people, he put words in people's mouths. I came up and said something about the condos, and he said, "Well, winters are winter." And I said, "Sir, you never heard the word winter come out of my mouth."
So Mr. Sheets was not on your side?
Mr. Sheets wasn't on anybody's side. Mr. Sheets was on his own side, I'm sure.
He gets like that once in a while. That's why we have him there.
He needs some-
I'm going to recommend that we send it back to planning and zoning. And then, because I'm in favor of letting her have a permit. I mean, I just cannot get convinced that she cannot do what she wants to with her lot.
But she bought a lot in an area that has a homeowners association, and she knew that because she bought the two across the street in 2003.
Would you let her build two houses?
Two separate houses?
Yes. Would you let her do that?
Well, actually, no, because it's only one lot. She can build one house, it's one lot.
Why don't we go ahead and work this out and let her build two houses and let her subdivide her lot?
Because it's only one lot, and you can't subdivide them? Single-family.
What happens if this council decides to approve this?
Mayor, may I ask a question or no?
Yes.
I would just like to ask if this has ever been brought to our board before, to city council? Has this ever happened before and been brought up? My question to you is, has this ever happened again, has this ever happened in the past? And have you been, when was that and what happened?
In 2007, March 26th, 2007, this city council had 12 pieces of property brought to them for rezoning, and they turned it down.
And what did you want it to be zoned on?
I'm sorry?
You wanted to, they brought him here to change the zoning on it?
Yes, and that was one of the properties, and you all said no.
And what happened to the other ones?
They're not built on either.
They're not building anything on them?
No, and they're not rezoned either.
Maybe we should give him a permit so they can build duplexes?
Only if you're living in one of them.
Maybe we made a mistake in 2007, you know, we had different council members.
Sir, these covenants have been in place since 1987.
Okay. I'm going to recommend that we send it back to planning and zoning. It's unanimous in planning and zoning, so it's very obvious that it's got to go back before we take any action here.
The other thing that you need to know is, planning and zoning may have approved part of what she wanted.
No, they approved everything.
Bear with me, bear with me, they did not.
Say something.
Say something?
I mean, he was there, so he should tell us.
Yes, sir. As far as the rezoning, the R2, the request to rezone to R2, it was approved, Mayor, by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Unanimously or?
At the Planning and Zoning Commission, the planning commission recommended approval of the R2 zoning. They recommended approval.
But not the variance.
The variance has to, has not gone before the Planning and Zoning Commission yet. The single lot variance, that's the subdivision portion of it. So what we're dealing right now this evening with is only the rezoning of this tract of land.
So it would have to come back again?
Yes, it would have to come back as a one-lot subdivision, a two-lot subdivision, or a single lot variance.
So we have that one as a R1?
Currently, it's agriculturally open interim, that parcel.
But it's not, it's on the agriculture?
Yes, yes, sir.
So we need to, so how, why can it be a duplex?
That's the process right now, Mayor. If it gets approved today by the council, it would, it could, the applicant can go, bring forth the one-lot subdivision or the single lot variance, and then she can construct her, it would be four units, four units there on that.
Duplexes?
It's duplex, fourplex, so the maximum size is, of this lot, is .250 an acre, and you can build four units on there. And she has-
It's only two units.
No, she's proposing four units, and she has some information here this evening. She is present, Mrs. Mena Garcia, if you would like to hear her side and hear her information.
Okay, let me, let me hear from her, from the applicant. Anybody else who would like to address this council on this matter?
Sir?
Mayor, there's some more in line, Mayor.
I just have a question for this council. Why do we have covenants if you won't help us back them up?
But we, you know-
Good afternoon, sir.
You're in favor, I'm assuming.
Yes, I hope so. My name is Mena Garcia, and, okay, I see there's some confusion here. Can I pass out some folders so that you can, I'll see. First of all, let me start out with, like I said, my name is Mena Garcia. We are a small family-owned operated, small business in multifamily for about 10, 12 years. My husband and I, we run, manage, and maintain all our units ourselves. That includes our two kids, they help us out too. My husband is a former oil field employee, and I'm a former early childhood teacher. But we are both currently, this is our small business and what we live off, you know, currently. We provide comfortable, clean, and equal housing for many of the families here in Mission. The property is surrounded by similar multifamily units in which we own 24 units. If I can show you. This right here, these units right here, that's what we currently own, or should I say the bank owns? But most of it anyway. And all this is multifamily, all families. This is condos. This is apartments right here, all the way through here. This is also condos. One of the questions I have, if they're saying that this property right here on this side on Riverbend is under covenants for use for only one family, what happened here with all these units? Yeah.
Townhouses?
There are townhouses.
Okay, so if I build, I can build townhouses then?
She- So can you build townhouses to sell?
Okay, we purchased the property and I was told we are not in the HOA because it's not applauded. It was, it's agriculture, and it's just a piece of property, therefore, it does not fall under the HOA, which was revealed on the last meeting by the president of the association. He said that this property right here does not belong to the HOA there in Meadow Creek.
In other words, they do not have any control over your piece of property?
They do not. Okay, we propose to build a two-story, I mean, no, one-story, a one-story building with two bedrooms and two baths and one car garage with extra parking for visitors. Green space will be in the front and in the back. The building will blend in with the rest of everything that's there. It's not going to be an eyesore, it's, if, I have some pictures here of-
This is our property. These are the surroundings, this is our piece of property and the surroundings that we see.
We have pictures there of our property and how we maintain our property. My husband and I, mostly him right now, he goes there every day, make sure there's no trash. The tenants park the way they're supposed to park. They do not trespass the golf course. We're always on top of everything ourselves. We maintain, clean, rent them out, everything ourselves.
Just to inform the council, it has been three minutes.
And you're going to have a one-car garage for each town?
One car garage and two extra parking spaces per unit. So that would be three parking spaces per, and it's only going to be four, so four families, I don't think it's going to make a big difference where there are so many.
And you were talking about two townhouses, two apartments?
Two duplexes. Four units, two duplexes.
Oh, four units.
Four families, yes.
Four families. Okay, any questions for, where am I at?
Mayor, I think that we have some more people over here that want us, want us-
Yeah, but I mean-
I don't have no questions, Mayor.
I have a question for staff. Is there any other property in this subdivision that is AOI?
Yes, ma'am, there is, Mayor Potem, there is other properties, and as noted earlier on the agenda item- earlier, on, on the agenda item, on, in, back in March of 2007, March 26, 2007, there was an application for several sites within Meadow Creek to be rezoned, but here, this afternoon, this is the only parcel that is before us, to rezonate from AOI to R2 duplex, fourplex. And what you have in your packets are her bullet points and her information regarding the property.
We only own that parcel, we don't own everything else.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to address council? State your name and address, please.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm Loris Bowser, my husband Olaguer Bowser. We are the, the owners of the company that recently bought the Meadow Creek Golf Course. And, well, our concern is, most of all, because all the apartments that is beside the golf course, all the people do not respect the golf course. They go and go into the greens with bikes, they, they go with the pets in the greens, so they, they don't respect, they don't care, because they're all rentals, right? And, well, the other thing is, like, all the traffic that is going to be there, you know, and all the, the garbage that this, this, you know, the dumpsters and everything that they are going to put there, well, that's, that's a problem. Then the other thing is, that's only one lot. Before we bought the property, we do a survey for all the property, and really, that's one lot only. And we are not against that they build something, but only a single family is okay, but not like duplex or, you know, four family, because they don't respect. Otherwise, if they, they build anything, we, we are requesting that they, they build a fence that, in the back, to protect our land, our course.
For the, for the golf course?
Yes, because they don't respect. Because, you know, all the, the courses surround the houses, but they respect the property. They don't go there and, and just, you know, they go with their dogs and their cats, and they're just running in the greens, and, and they go, all the necessities, and they don't clean it, and, and they, sometimes they just have the, the golf cart track, they just use it for running on bike, and, you know, that's not for it, so.
You're talking about the, the other apartments?
The, we-
Just talking about-
Are you talking about the existing apartments, you gave me that example?
Yeah, it's an example.
So, I think the HOAs would like to address that, no?
The what, sorry?
The HOAs.
They're not part of the HOA.
The people that are running around in bicycles are not part-
The other one, there's no part of that, of the, the association. This lot is, but the other not. Get a lot of, that's on there. And-
I don't speak English.
Sorry, it is, I don't speak English. Well, yeah, that's, that's more of that. All the, the bikes and the people running across there, they don't respect, so that's our content, and that's too close. And also, you know, the measures of the lot is 156 by 70 for the back, so I think it's too short to have, like, so much spaces in there for parking. And also, we are not against they build something, but no a duplex or, you know, too much family. Single family is great, you know? And we, we know everyone now and everything.
If they agree that a single family, would you be okay with it?
A single family, yes.
With two apartments?
Well, a single family is one apartment.
No, one, me, te paro matar.
A family can own two apartments.
Okay.
And the fence also to protect that, yes. Single is one, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
State your name and address, sir.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name's Thomas Clinton. I live at 1908 Riverbend Drive, approximately two and a half blocks down from this parcel of property. I'm retired law enforcement. I do have some bases behind the security aspect of the difficulties in that area. The board, one of the Planning and Zoning Board, and I was physically present, everything that was done by Mr. Sheets, he did not want to hear anything from any of us that were in there, with the problems that we are fully aware of, the year-rounders, the condominiums on Oasis that are right on the corner, as to the traffic difficulties, the danger to the golfers, the danger to the winter Texans, to the children out there, to all people passing. His only comment to that, besides being sarcastic, was the simple aspect, the computer doesn't show anything to it. Police reports are recorded when there's time to get units out there, as I'm sure Mr. Garza knows and the city knows. When you're looking at things, the near misses from the stop signs being run, the kids almost being run over, the near misses on the senior citizens trying to cross from number 12 Green to go across the street to number 13 T-Box, all by the people coming out of the condominiums and the apartments that are down Oasis. The Oasis condominiums and apartments are no part of the HOA for Phase 1 or Phase 1B, A or B. Our covenants, of which there's 293 lots out there that those covenants cover, all dictate we don't want apartments down in the HOA. That's why the covenants were written, appearing by your statements that you don't care what the covenants and all of us homeowners are down there.
No, of course, I have the covenants all over this.
But that piece of property, even by your own zoning board, as they addressed it and marked it up on their agenda, acknowledges that it's part of that phase, and that phase is covered by the HOA covenants.
Why, why wouldn't it be part of, why would it be part of your covenants?
All of the sides of Riverbend there, all the way down to the far end where it empties into Inspiration, both sides of the street is part of the phase as it was put forth by the city when it was first brought into being. The original charts and maps all show all of that as part of Phase 1A and Phase 1B, which is what was covered by the covenants of the Meadow Creek Homeowners Association, also known as the Seven Oaks Homeowners Association.
Seven Oaks, yeah.
It's one in the both, depending on whose interpretation you're using for the name.
Well, you know, I've known Meadow Creek since it started, so it changed paths and changed associations, and we lost track one point or another. I was the county commissioner when, when we built that, when I, I approved that subdivision of Meadow Creeks.
Then you're fully aware of the phases that are happening on top of the block.
I know, we have Meadow Creeks, because I was there, we took care of the drainage, we took care of everything except the associations. We have nothing to do with that, but they lost some of the associations, since, you know, I'm talking about, about 25, 30 years ago.
Phase 1A and Phase 1B Homeowners Association has not fallen apart, it is one in the same association that's been in effect for the total time period as required by law in its original charter. The other phases, 2A or 1B or whatever it is on the other end, all of the condos that are privately owned, that's the key point, they're not rental properties with people moving in and out in the middle of the night, or running their races up and down and all the rest of it, they are homeowners taking pride in their individual properties. Both of the main units that have been denoted here, as you're showing, the one set of condominiums that run up on Riverbend and up on Circle Drive, they have their own set of covenants for their own homeowners association. The covenants that are on the corner of Oasis and Riverbend Drive, of which Mr. Rick Wright is here, along with his other half, they're presidents of that independent homeowners association that covers those. They are not part of the Phase 1 and Phase 1B HOA. We have the covenants there and the decree for the one-family residences for the reason we don't want the proper, apartments and condos scattered throughout. We bought our homes there because it is a home community.
But you'd be okay with, with a townhouse or a condo?
A townhouse is nothing more than an apartment in a different name that's built slightly differently.
I mean, what you have is condos?
Our properties in the HOA, we want single-family residences, that's why it is dictated as that in the covenants that has been voted on by all of the members of the association, sir.
But, but she cannot build two houses in that lot?
That is one lot. I believe last time I saw anything, one lot, it means one house.
It really isn't one lot because it hasn't been subdivided, so that one tract could be subdivided into two or three.
If they are single-family residences that are owned by others, they are not up there for rent or anything else, ma'am, they're primary residences.
I just want to make it clear that it's not necessarily one lot, it's one tract.
At the moment, it's one lot.
It's a tract of land of-
But it could be subdivided into two or three?
Yes, yes, it could.
That's covered by your zoning board and the city ordinances on that, I can't tell you one way or the other, sir.
Well, thank you very much, and let me see what we're going to do here. Who else wants to say a few words?
Very quickly, my name-
Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Adams, I'm a resident out 1900, 1900 Crystal Drive, I'm, I'm a homeowner, part of the homeowners association. I think maybe what we can get this resolved very quickly if, if the developer would agree to it. No one in this room is, would be objected to, object, object to having a single-family residence built on that property. No one in this room wants to keep the tax base low for Mission, City of Mission, nobody, nobody here wants that. People here are very upset because of the way we got treated last, last time at the zoning board, you can thank Mr. Sheets for that. If the developer would consider building a single-family unit on that lot, there'd be absolutely no, no problem to hold it.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would like to apologize to everyone here that was offended by Mr. Sheets at that last meeting, and that type of behavior is not condoned by any of us.
Federal election makes all of you folks look very bad.
Well, I, I understand that, and that's why-
You're responsible for it.
That's why I'm, I am personally apologizing for that.
Appreciate that.
And I'm not up for reelection tonight, but-
Appreciate it very much.
Just to let you know.
Thank you very much. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. But I'm going to recommend that we go ahead and send it back to planning and zoning.
I agree, Mayor, we need to do that.
Hmm?
We need to send it back to P&amp;Z.
Well, just for your information, they voted, everybody voted in favor of giving her a permit.
I understand.
Okay. We need a motion to send it back to planning and zoning.
So moved.
Motion is second, that we go ahead and send this item back to planning and zoning.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mayor, I want to go for the record that I'm denying the request to go back, because my position is that I wanted to deny the, the request for R2, for the record.
Okay, well, that, that's not the- The motion is to go ahead and send it back to planning and zoning, you're not in favor of sending it back?
No, sir.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I will vote aye, that's a 4-1 vote, it goes to planning and zoning, motion carries. Thank you all very much, and I hope, um-
Are we going to be notified again?
Yes.
Yes, you will.
Well, I'm sure you guys will work something out. Thank you.
Mayor, the owner from Meadow Creek says that she was not notified.
Well, but you're 200 feet away.
You didn't get a notification, well, because you're two feet, you're more than 200 feet away.
Oh, it's my, it's my green.
The green, the green is right behind the-
How far are you from this lot?
It's a border.
Danny, was she supposed to be notified if she's the owner of Meadow Creek?
Danny get a notice?
We'll make sure you get a notice, sir. Estamos seguros que le mandamos una notificación.
And also, our lot is in the tract, like, this is our lot, and also, we have the spot, we have a lot.
We'll make sure that you get a notice, sir.
This is mine, and also this, it's mine.
We notify everyone based on the appraisal district records, and we'll make sure you get a notice.
Okay, thank you. Much gusto. Next item is item B.
Item 1.1B is a public hearing for rezoning of a 0.85 acre tract of land out of Lot 29-4, West Edition to Sheri Land Subdivision, from agricultural open interim to C3 General Business District. The applicant is Baurelio Cortinas, and this would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council's inclined to approve it. On March 23, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The property is located at the northwest corner of Trosper and Two Mile, West Two Mile Road. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of the C3 zone. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing, this matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, we'll go ahead and accept the recommendation and adopt ordinance 4337. We do need a motion for that.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
A motion is second to approve the rezoning and also approve ordinance 4337. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. So item C?
Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to place a mobile home temporarily to care for a health-stricken family member at 700 South FM 1016, also known as 700 South Conway. This is a 6.5 acre tract of land out of Lot 16-6, West Edition to Sheri Land Subdivision. The current zoning is agricultural open interim, and the owner is Herado Wahado, and this would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council's inclined to approve it. On March 23, 2016, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. Mr. Wahado is, is sick, and, and he lives on, on the premises, and he's proposing to move in a mobile home so that his daughter can live there and take care of him. The property is located between the, or at the southwest corner of US Expressway 83 and South Conway. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of the conditional use permit for three years. Staff is recommending approval for three years, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing, this matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we-
Move that we approve the-
We get the permit?
Mayor, 4338.
And that we go ahead and adopt ordinance 4338. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item D?
Item D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages for Nuevo León Express Taquerías at 2215 West Mile 3 Road. This is a 4.79 acre tract of land, being the west, 4.79 acres of the east, 5.63 acres of Lot 24, New Caledonia, Unit Number 1. It's currently Zone C3. The applicant is Nuevo León Taquerías LLC, and if the council's inclined to approve it, it will require the adoption of an ordinance. This is right at the north, south, east corner of, what is it, Schubach, Schubach and, and Mile 3, Mayor, where the apartments are going to be built. And so, this, this matter was presented to the Planning Commission on March 23 of this year. We had a public hearing for this conditional use permit. The property is located between Schubach and Morphyo along the south side of, of Mile 3. There was no public opposition during the meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of this conditional use permit for one year. Staff is recommending approval for one year, subject to waiver of the 300-foot separation requirement from residential neighborhoods, and to compliance with ordinance 4320. Our city manager is in agreement with this recommendation. This is a public hearing, this matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we ask to go ahead and approve the conditional use permit in our ordinance 4339. Do need a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item E?
Thank you, Mayor. Item E is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to keep a portable building for office use at 1117 South Sheri Road, being Lot 1, McManus Subdivision. The zoning is C3, and the applicant is Antonio Herrera. This would require the adoption of an ordinance. At this location, we have a, a unique auto detailing, which is a car wash, and Roca's Homes, that's where their office is at. It's just south of Colorado on the east side of Sheri Road. On March 23, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to, to consider this conditional use permit. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for life of use. Staff is recommending approval for life of use, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing, this matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, we accept the recommendation to approve our conditional use permit?
I move for approval, second.
I would like to say that, not to give them a life use, but maybe a three-year use, would that be okay with you guys? How can you give somebody- How can you give somebody portable building for office for life use?
We can bring it back, Mayor, at any time, or the council can recommend three years or whatever you would like.
What I'm saying, three years.
Mayor, if you need an amendment to the motion, I will amend the motion for three years.
Second. I made the motion, though. I would need to amend it. I amended my motion.
I'm confused about it, but I don't know why you all are giving a portable building a life use.
Yes, sir. We'll take...
Danny, is this considered a portable building?
There's a...
It's under, you all listed it like that, but...
Yes, sir.
It's a portable building, I know that building.
It is, okay.
It's been a portable building forever.
I think the reason the staff recommended that and myself, Mayor, only because of the time of years that it has been in existence. We've never had any issues. However, we'll be more happy to do a three-year and bring it back another three years from now for another conditional use permit.
Okay, how do we work this motion here?
I amended my motion already, Mayor, to reflect the three-year.
Okay. The recommendation is to approve the conditional use permit and to amend it to a three-years life use, and also approve ordinance 4340. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item F?
Item F is a public hearing. This is for a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window, and this would be Tortilla Carmelita at 600 North Sheri Road, Suite F, Lot 1, Esdras Vega Subdivision. Current zoning is C3, and the applicant is Carmen Rivera, and this would require the adoption of an ordinance. On March 23rd, 2016, the planning and zoning commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. Property is located at the northeast corner of East 6th Street and Sheri Road. There was no public opposition during the P and Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for one year. Staff is recommending approval for one year, subject to the conditional use permit not being transferable to others, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing, this matter is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we accept the recommendation of the conditional use permit and also to adopt ordinance 4341.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and second to approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item G?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1G is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for home occupation, and this is for a licensed child daycare at 4204 San Roman, Lot 26, Paseo Lindo, Phase 2 Subdivision in the Sheri Land Plantation. The applicant is Nora Argüés, and this would require the adoption of an ordinance. We did have a public hearing before the planning commission on March 23rd of this year, and the property is located within, can you go back to the map, within this subdivision? As you can see in your monitors, there was no public opposition during the planning commission meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for three years. Staff is recommending approval for three years as well, and our city manager is recommending approval as well for three years. This is a public hearing, this matter is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we accept the, to accept the conditional use permit and also to adopt 4342, ordinance 4342. We do need a motion to approve. Bueno?
I move for approval, Mayor.
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation and also approve ordinance 4342. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item H?
Item H, Mayor, I received an email from the applicant stating that he would like to table this item until the next meeting.
Move to table.
Second, Mayor.
We move?
Can we do that? It's a public hearing.
Is it to table the item?
Can we table it?
There's no issue with that, yes.
We have a motion and second to go ahead and table it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
I have a question for legal. By table in the public hearing, are you going to send notices out to the other?
Notices must be sent again, yes, for the new hearing.
Must be sent again, right?
Yes.
We'll take care of that.
Thank you for clarification.
Item 2.1 is disposition of minutes. We have at a meeting at March 28th of 2016, we did a motion to approve the minutes.
So move, Mayor.
To the second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. To acknowledge the minutes that we had for the Mission Redevelopment Authority on January the 14th and February the 23rd of 2016, Mission Tech Increment Reinvestment Zone on January the 14th and February the 23rd of 2016, zoning board of adjustment on January the 20th, and planning and zoning commission on March the 9th of 2016, and March the 4th of 2016. We have to acknowledge those minutes. We need a motion to do that.
Move for approval, Mayor.
A motion?
Second, Mayor.
A second to approve the acknowledgement that we received of those minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.1, Mr. Medina?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Item 4.1 is a request for a variance by KEM Texas LTD to install a new billboard at 408 West Griffin Parkway, being a 2.45 acre tract of land out of Lot 25-3, West Edition of Sheri Land Subdivision. The zoning of the property is C3. We received an application for the billboard on April 20th of, not of this year, 2016. I'm sorry, it's incorrect, the date there. It was March 20th of 2016, to install a 40-foot-high, double-sided billboard at the above location. The permit was received and denied based on the following. Number one, this section of Griffin Parkway is not identified as a secondary arterial corridor, and as far as the square footage, they're proposing 378 square feet. It would be a 10 by 6 by 36-foot face on each side. The billboards, number three, the billboard is within 1,000 feet of other Mission business ground pole signs, so similar to the other variance we had on Conway, 14th and Conway. KEM Texas LTD is appealing the decision made by staff and requesting a variance to the three sections of the sign code. It is noted that there are no billboards between Conway Avenue and Holland on Griffin Parkway. If the variance is approved, this billboard could serve as a public service announcement sign as well as to advertise Mission businesses. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is, this matter is now before you.
Is this a billboard, period? What size?
The size is, it's 40 feet high, and it's double-face. The height is 10 feet by 6 inches by 36 feet.
Okay.
36.
Is there anything wrong with it?
Uh, no, sir.
So you all approving it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the request.
Move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 4.2?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Item 4.2 is just authorization to change location of the April 25th, 2016 City Council Meeting to Spear Memorial Library, and, Mayor, this is due because this room is going to be used for early voting, and that's the first day of early voting.
Okay.
Move for approval, Mayor. Approval. Second.
We have a motion and second to move to our next meeting to Spear Memorial Library. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 4.3?
Yes, Mayor, this would be approval of Resolution 1442, designating Hidalgo County MPO members, and, Mayor, Council, just MPO is requesting now an official resolution where the mayor serves as the main designee for MPO with our city manager, Mr. Martin Garza, as the alternate voting member, and with Roberto Salinas as the proxy. So they're just requesting an official resolution for this.
Resolution 1442. We need a motion?
Move for approval, Mayor. Second.
A motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
4.4, Mr. Meads?
Mr. Meads, not present, sir. We do have Mr. Lima Cormick, president of the Community Development Association, who's going to come in and present on behalf of Mr. Meads.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is the second supplemental resolution for the NatGasoline Beaumont Methanol Production Facility bond financing. The, as you may recall, city council approvals are good for 60 days. The bonds have to close within that 60-day window. Right now, the council had approved on February 22nd, the last time, which expires on April 22nd. We are anticipating closing by month-end, but not quite sure if we'll meet that April 22nd date, so we're here requesting another 60-day extension.
I move for approval.
Second, Mayor.
This is a resolution, right?
Yes, sir.
1443. What's a resolution? Okay, we do have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1443. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
I was going to ask you, can you get together with Alex and find out where we're at since we started doing these bonds back some years ago? And actually find out how much money we have made?
Absolutely. I think we had provided that to the auditors a year or two ago. We can update that.
We can provide the council so they'll know what's coming to the city.
Absolutely. You'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
4.5, Mr. Lopez.
Mayor, City Council. Deputy Chief Williams presenting for Chief Lopez. The Mission Fire Department is seeking authorization to purchase water rescue equipment from Safewear Inc. in the amount of $49,271.70 for US Community Contract. This purchase will be paid through the 2015 Homeland Security Grant, and we'll close out the grant funding.
I so move, Mayor.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the request by the Fire Department, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
4.7, 4.6?
Yes, Mayor and Council. The next item is authorization to declare items as surplus and sell by online auction. Staff is seeking approval to declare the attached list of items as surplus. Items have been acquired by the library over the years through purchase, contribution, or donation assignment, and all items have been determined to be of no use to the library.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Next item?
Yes, approval of annual Hidalgo County Library System Interlocal Agreement. Hidalgo County requests that we approve our annual interlocal with them. This is a basic agreement that allows the county to continue to pay funds on behalf of and to disburse funds to our library for contractual services and library materials.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 4.8, Chief Dominguez?
Mayor, City Council, the Mission Police Department is requesting approval of a resolution in support of a submission of a grant application to the Office of the Governor for the 2017 Local Border Security Program Grant. The grant will allow the Mission Police Department to increase patrols throughout the city of Mission, especially in and around the US Mexican border. The increased police presence will assist in deterring crime in our community and to include border crime. The total amount of the grant request is $267,402. There is no cash match required by the city of Mission. Staff is respectfully requesting a favorable recommendation for the purpose of submitting the grant application to the Office of the Governor.
I so move that we approve Resolution 1444, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve Resolution 1444. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.9?
The Mission Police Department is requesting authorization to accept the 2016 Click-It or Ticket Grant from the Texas Department of Transportation. The 2016 Click-It or Ticket Grant is designed to provide grant funds to increase seatbelt enforcement for both adults and young children throughout the community. The grant amount is $5,000, will be utilized for enforcement purposes. There is no cash match required for this particular grant. Again, staff is seeking a favorable recommendation to accept the grant.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and second to accept the grant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you, Chief. On the task.
One more, sir.
Okay.
Hold on.
Okay.
The next one, the Mission Police Department is requesting approval of a resolution to submit an agreement for the temporary closure of State Right-of-Way to the Texas Department of Transportation for the Do or Die Duathlon Sponsored by Bike Masters. The agreement is required by the Texas Department of Transportation for the closure of the southbound lane of FM 1016, commencing at the Mission Hike and Bike Trail onto Military Highway, south on Sheri Road to Granqueno, and continue back north on FM 1016 to end at the Mission Hike and Bike Trail. The Mission Police Department will be responsible for securing the entire route of this bike race.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Second, Mayor.
Motion and second to approve the Resolution 1445. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
We do not have on any business. Do you have anything to...
No, Mayor, no comments.
I have no comments either. We do have executive session.
Mayor, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to VTCA Government Code Section 551.001, Mayor.
Okay. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
I move that we adjourn, Mayor.
A motion and a second to reconvene. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.